It is now 6:30, and if you're watching this, you're watching the Town of Halifax Board of Selectments meeting for Tuesday, August 25th, 2020, and we will, as we usually do, start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Garrett's going to lead us in a song. We start with the approval of the agenda. Has everyone had an opportunity to look at it? Are we good with it?
I'm good.
Yep. Have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Selectment meeting minutes, regular session for July 28th, 2020, and regular session August 3rd, 2020. Has everybody had an opportunity to review them?
I have.
If yes, can I have a motion?
I'll move them. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Garrett?
I move to affirm the approval of the following warrants and commitments. Payroll warrant number 15 for $216,941.81. Vindah warrant number 16 for $228,369.58. Withholding warrant number 17 for $74,778.49. And ambulance commitments from '83 to '89, $62,130.86.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to approve the following warrant, vindah warrant number 18 for $64,622.11.
Moved. You moved it, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And Halifax bills, selectmen's bills. I'd like to present for Power Solid and the LZCD audit for Town of Halifax, $9,000.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Spectum is expense account, WB Mason invoice date, date 17, 2020, $486.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the last one is for Town Hall Electricity, National Grid, coming July 20th through August 18th, $1,407.70.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Wow, that sounds like a bargain. Mine was $300. General Mail, Mr. Seale.
The only thing I got back about Claire was that he didn't talk to the PA and Lake side though, ensuring precautions they're taking. I know that both of you are, you know, who's a Republican, personally relates to facilities. It was a argument that they need to be taking precautions, working with customers about the outside line as we, as the hours get closer to the end of the day. We haven't heard anything from the state about errors for eight or all, from one person that usually, you know, is a kind of act, maybe they said to them, but if they make a decision, it's not instantaneous situation, it's simply clean up the next day or week. Obviously, for the counties considering their spray program on the ground, it's probably hard right now. So as we know, we don't receive these if we personally have cases here in Halifax. On the COVID discussion, we did get to more requests of clearly fine amounts, thousands of dollars for emergency medical school for kids, preventive and protective gear, supplies. We, I did talk to Tom O'Brien, Cleveland County, I think I talked to all about it on Thursday last week, and I can update everybody for the departments, but the big question mark was the drop off pickup area where I specified on Thursday that we're doing that at risk in the sense of there's always, I always say there's always less than a single, but that's another way of making more questionable. I think we're going to need to work with Bob and with the school department on crafting a narrative to justify why we're doing what we're doing over there, the response to COVID in Canada. If they say no, and we are not able to get money from another source, we're on the hook for it, and eventually what do we do other than go create a town meeting for something that's a lot of better for that. There is a care society in Cleveland County this Thursday, it's going to coincide with the selectmen's meeting at that afternoon. Cindy Nolan's volunteer to attend another meeting, but she'll provide some long information. I assume that at this point, it's already close to September, four months away from the deadline for expenditures, that this would probably be the last discussion about how we're going to take the 40% that's still remaining in the conference. Not money that we're allocating to various towns, but there's 40% that they have allocated on whatever basis they use, and I suspect the discussions are focused on that whole thing out there. On OU, I'm on the update. The state sent the reports for the individual months during the first part between 2020. Obviously, with the pandemic, some of those were blank since many years were old, and as those accounts say, there was one report on the T-Box, when I quote, "22nd of 2019", in the past, for the first reporting, just to remind the board, if these, this information is simply based on the person who had the OU, and says that they were, their last three months, had a particular establishment, there's no investigation afterwards to follow through. So it's, it's, it's hearsay, but what we've done in the past is, when we have one of these, we do send a letter to the establishment, just reminding them of their responsibilities in serving the public.
So moved.
Do you think we can do that?
So moved.
I'll second the water.
Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
I think that's appropriate, put them on notice.
You're proposing the charging stations at Town Hall through Lindsey, who's also part of the plan on the, by his committee, has proposed that the town install the charging stations here at the parking lot on the board, I consider this before, and was not interested, it was maybe a couple of years ago, I brought up because there were various grant programs available. I don't know whether you want him to come meet with the board and do a presentation of what the board's budget was.
I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I think that would be appropriate if he has some ideas of how this could be set up and/or work. Certainly, electric vehicles are becoming more prevalent. My only concern is that as long as it's not on the back of the taxpayers to pay for the charging.
Well, that, my biggest concern is that where would we place it? On the building itself? At the parking lot, which means tearing up the driveway?
Well, I think, my guess is to, prior to the charging stations, let's say, on the far end here?
Next to the?
Near to the water tower end?
Yeah.
You still have to run lines from someplace quite in Town Hall, or from poles on to the parking lot to bring the electric over there. I don't think you need to tear up the parking lot.
No, we've got, there's poles out there that are servicing the water and the antenna equipment, it would just be a matter of putting a meter up for that. But, but again, I'd be happy and like to have a.
Who's going to fill the capital costs as you mentioned?
Right.
I think generally, it is not being tried to be a kite. I've never used one, I don't have one, but I guess maybe you might have to run credit card through the machine, get a certain amount of minutes or something like that.
I think originally, a lot of places that had them were just giving them gratis, but I don't see that we should be doing that. I mean, we don't give people free gas, I mean, regardless of where you stand on the environment. But if he has some information that could be useful to us, perhaps some grant programs or some experience with some other institutions that have installed them, we'd love to hear it.
Okay, please. Alcohol on credits licensing fees for 2021. There was a discussion on what if PM's list serves about whether communities were interested in giving reduction of credit for all kinds of alcohol licenses in 2021. During these venues having closed for several months during 2020, and I don't know if the board had any interest in doing that. Don't know the exact dates, I would guess it'd be somewhere mid-March, mid-June, so roughly three months. I have to check the log, the state's orders as to when the venues could reopen, but I guess some of the communities are considering doing that, not a cut, not a cut into 2020, not a refund, but let's say.
Some, some proportion.
Let's say it was $2,400 for a long-term alcohol license. So $200 a month instead of $2,400 for 2021, it would be $1,800 for a month, something like that. I don't know if the board had any interest in doing something like that.
I mean, as a general rule, I think that's fair, to at least consider doing something for them. I mean, we want to help our business owners, we don't want to keep driving people down. Business is bad enough in most places. I, I personally wouldn't have a problem, I kind of like that approach, sort of apportioned for the amount of time that they were officially closed. Open to thoughts and suggestions?
I, I would agree with you that I think it's reasonable for us to do something like that, just as much as it's been done across the state in certain areas, and they've, they've suffered probably more than most businesses than anything else.
And even, even at that, they're probably not at full service in any way.
And the thing is, it may be variable, I don't know how much work I was thinking out, so for instance, Row 58 didn't open up for a while, even though they had, they could have done it, or done it at certain bit if they weren't ready to go. Do we give them the additional weeks' credit? I'm not saying we shouldn't, I'm just saying that it's, they're going to be, it's already set about months for everybody, or whether, whether they reopen as.
Maybe we could table this to a future meeting with the intent to do something, and in the meantime, we can find more specific dates for openings and whatnot that work for everybody. That's fine.
I don't know if the board wanted to do anything on policy banners or stuff tonight, or if, I'll just, we have something on the board already, I'll bring it back over. I don't have any.
There's already about political signs and the type of size, the size of the signs would be, but we have, the bylaw stated, I think the one years ago, that no political signs could be placed on town properties without permission.
Right, well, it's all banners, political bylaws, the policy by the board, like back in 94, it said that before any banners or anything else was put up, the need for permission of the board. Didn't that, even if it was a voice out, having a bottle drive or something like that, permission was needed from the board.
Well, from my standpoint, opinions seated on town property, it's, it's a little off because we're here for everybody, and if you start allowing those signs to be put up, then other signs will be put up, and it becomes a really costly. I personally don't think that it needs to be on town property because we're supposed to be neutral, we're serving, we're serving everybody.
I'm in total agreement with that, we do have a policy in place. There was a time when some banners and door flags were considered innocuous, that's not the case anymore, everything's politically charged, or at least it seems to be, and if you allow one flag for any particular purpose, you've got to open it up for everybody, and I don't think that's going to work out, and to Troy's point, I think we need to remain neutral. I think we leave the policy we have in place, I think that covers what we need to do. I don't think we need to do anything different other than to reiterate the policy.
I guess the only perspective that I have, different that I guess has evolved, is that the flag that was first put up, I think was not a political statement, I think it was a supporting of.
Exactly.
And I think it morphed into something different at this stage, so I understand the reason for taking it down and the reason that the policy's in place, so I understand it.
I'll just leave the policy in place, and just continue following the policy. High Street Bog Properties, the Houston Helicopters, according to their, the owner of the bogs, the helicopter, the children, complaining about conversation between Mr. Harju and his chair was not documented. When the conservation commission received anonymous complaint about Bieber Downs being destroyed over these properties by parties unknown, and the conservation commission shared that the owners visited the property and found evidence in connection with the allocations. Our conservation commission has invited Mr. Harju to meet with the commission about that, I believe he may be here with them tonight, I don't know. On issue, the helicopters of the board likes town council to work with this chair about developing a bylaw which would indicate this, however, I don't see this as something qualified with the conservation commissions, therefore, this is the chair would be doing this as a private individual. The alternative would be for this chair or others to have issues with the helicopters to work with their own plan, the town council, or with the local council to develop such a bylaw.
I, I think it becomes problematic, this whole agricultural use thing also enters into it a little bit. I would hope that it could be worked out between the parties, but if, short of that, if Mr. Fitzgerald wanted to pursue a bylaw, by, by all means, he could get his required signatures, and I think for an annual, it's only 10 signatures, and present it to the townsfolk and see what their mood is, and certainly, I understand Mr. Fitzgerald's concern. He, he spoke to me recently, indicated that it was a 6 o'clock in the morning wake-up on a Sunday morning. I know that Mr. Harju had some, some issues with trying to arrange, apparently, there's very few helicopters available for performing this service, and he had to take advantage of what he could have available to him. Possibly wouldn't be a problem in the future, but by all means, if Mr. Fitzgerald wants to pursue it, you know, we can do what we can to help and let him present it. Anybody?
I understand it's a quality of life issue. I mean, if we have trucks that can't start their homes up in Ohio for hours in the morning, helicopters that ain't going to my house for the worst part of the year, and they get out of out.
I remember 8 o'clock at 5 o'clock in the morning, all sour, nobody had air conditioning, everybody's windows are open. Understandable.
If Mr. Harju contacts me, I'll tell him, suggest that the board has, police workers on the council or other people develop a bylaw, bring it to me.
Everybody good?
That's fine.
On Post Street, the speed limits and the engine braking, I'm still waiting here back from the traffic safety committee about recommendations. These were from the section from the Lakeside Village, industry, on the idea of being, if they settle the size up, and also, so. So, I'll continue. We'll send another note out to the traffic committee, hoping that we'll hear from them by the next final sub meeting. Just to remind, we do have county, it's 612, and we have a commander for these quests that will be there on Friday, set up the elementary school for the Indian IT connections between the gym and the multi-purpose room, and both Matt Durkey and Scott Bichillo are about getting set up.
Would they not stop, start the work until after the school day's over?
I mean.
Because the, the only questions right now about the use of the building are, the all-purpose room and the gym would be used for the daycare part of the afternoon, which I don't know right now what time the.
When is school scheduled to reopen?
Oh, you're right, the 16th, never mind.
Okay.
I was, I was. Sorry, lots of meetings today.
It's okay.
University County, you know, project, I missed some of the corrections to Caesar of the addresses, absolutely, actually, putting addresses correct, so my whole visit is to be laid out once in a while. But 163, Columbus Street cleanup, I just heard back from Allen, they've not brought anything back from any day, I believe the board held it, saying letters out later this week to them, trying to get something to move in there. On Lincoln Street, Beach signage, I went by there earlier today, the, there are little parking signs on the north side of the street, those are, I think, fairly old, but they're there, still need to put them on the south side, still need the sign of grassy area or leaning the southwest corner. The beach sign is prominent, especially one at the gate, specifically says Halifax residence, so we're freely using the street for that. I did send it up to Steve, and to Tom, ask at this time, to just get a status update as to if the signs are, for instance, ones on the south side of the street, what type deal is, we had a thought. Okay, enrolled in transactions, it's really nothing new to report, the bill to transfer the silver, silting, and third reading in the house. There's nothing, from 17 to 18, the decisions were filed on the ZDA, the town office said all that, and the same thing on the last. Court case there regarding the town root project, we did have a site visit for two firms today, the vindad lines September 3rd, the architects said, he served from a few other firms who didn't feel the need to make a site visit, but did base on documents, so I'm hoping we'll get a few bids at least, so we'll have bids in the numbers to bring the town meetings for that property. That's what I got. Obviously, the reason for all the things short is we want to slow stuff to last Thursday's meeting, so we could shorten it. We were playing this at 7:15 with Steve Bowman on a possible reason they're a large store, and then 7:45, we have a truck coming here for service to the malls, so.
Well, in that case, I would suggest we take a recess until 7:15.
On the executive session, is there anything?
No.
Nothing for negotiations at this time?
Because I think, I think we're going to get stuff in the next couple days, but I put that on, we had it on Thursday, so that we need to come back and discuss it about it here.
Okay. I get a motion to adjourn until 7:15?
Take a break.
Second, or recess until 7:15. Second, all those in favor? Aye.
Can you go back to Mr. Stur?
Yeah, come on, you?
Yeah, okay.
Okay. All right, thank you. We're back, we had a short recess, we have a scheduled appointment at 7:15, Mr. Steve Bowman from CenterPoint Safe Company to talk about a possible retail marijuana store. I believe Mr. Bowman is with us?
Yes.
If you would like to tell us what you're thinking about doing.
Is it fine to sit here? I don't know what the protocol is.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, as long as you speak loud.
Yeah, that's fine. So, my name's Steve Bowman, I was a Halifax resident for eight years, I just left the town about six months ago, moved to Kingston. My kids have all been raised here, all over Silver Lake. My oldest, Peter, was 2015, Silver Lake, is currently in the US Navy. My daughter, 2017 graduate, is a teacher in Quincy School District, special needs. She's the work of my partner right now. My son Joshua, has special needs, is autistic, has been in Silver Lake his entire life, and currently, now, the last two years, resides at Carton Pushing in Hanover, where he's a full-time student there. And then I have a younger son who's a senior in high school, or going into a senior, 2021 graduate, and also works right up the street here at Dunkin' Donuts. So the reason I'm telling you this is that I don't have anything to present to you tonight as far as paperwork or documents, I'm not quite at this stage yet where I'm ready to, to talk to you folks more formally about a proposal. This is work that we're going behind the scenes with different areas, but I wanted to come tonight to basically introduce myself, to tell you who I was, to put the face to a potential proposal that we would bring to the board, that would come from myself as a local resident, a father of Silver Lake students, a former resident of Halifax, and someone that is looking to, obviously, not only open a business and, and make money for myself and my partners, but also to give something back to the community. I currently work for a company that's called CenterPoint Safe, we're located out of Avon, so we do safe sales and security for a lot of different businesses and industries in the area. We recently, or for the last year or so, we got very involved in cannabis industry throughout the state. We have a lot of dispensaries, cultivation sites, that have come to us, asked us to provide the security for their, their inventory, for their cash, and whatnot, and during that time period, I got close to a lot of the operators, a lot of the owners, and the people who run these operations day to day. Recently, in the state of Massachusetts, they now issued delivery licenses for companies to do home delivery, in the United States of Massachusetts, so we're in the process of forming a delivery company in the state of Massachusetts. It's currently only open to candy, to our qualified, the cannabis commission, and have either what's, he is called economic empowerment, or socially quality. So, one of the members of our team is a kid who's a 51% owner of our company, has applied to the CCC and received those designations through them. So we're moving forward with that, and probably within, within a three to four month time period, we'll be servicing dispensaries throughout the state of Massachusetts, doing home delivery on recreational. There is currently medical delivery that's out there for dispensaries right now, for medical dispensaries, there is not home delivery for the recreational, so we're opening the business right now to do that. On top of that, we're also, we also have a plan in place, and we, we're working with the stores and opening stores in potentially South Boston and potentially Malden, and we're looking at other locations, and when we discussed towns that had potential licensing opportunities, and I saw Halifax on the list, I thought, I told my group that even though Halifax is a smaller town, even though it would be a small retail store, that I wanted to at least come and pursue the opportunity. Where it goes from here, I don't know. I know that, you know, obviously, you folks have to make a decision, obviously, there's a, there's a long process here, there's a lot of due diligence that we have to do on our end in regards to property, into real estate, where we would, or would not be able to locate in the town. There's a lot that goes into it, and that's something that I'm just starting to work on, and something that I want to present to you folks in the future. But I thought it was fair to come to the group first and at least state my intentions and allow you immediately, and certainly ask any questions that you may have of me. The, the biggest reason that I want to bring this potential to Halifax, and again, it's, it's still in the early stages, so I don't want to go too deep into the, the numbers and whatnot. Most of the cannabis stores, when, when we run numbers, we look at the population base within a certain area. Depending on where we were to locate in the city, the potential for a cannabis store somewhere in Halifax, I mean, somewhere between $8 and $9 million per year. At a 3% local tax, which is the standard that the town will charge for a tax on a product over and above the state tax, the standard is 3%. So at, at $8 million, 3% is roughly $240,000 in local tax that would come back to Halifax. On top of that, there's a 3% fee that is charged, and typically, the cannabis board calls it a fee that's charged from the op, from the retailer back to the town for town enhancements on things that, depending on where the shop was located, if there was road construction or a light, or something that was going to inconvenience a town, that, that money is earmarked for that. Typically, the town is supposed to submit requests, what the, you know, what would be an inconvenience fee, or whatever you want to call it, that that dispensary would then pay. The maximum that can be paid out is 3% for five years. Sometimes it's a lot less, depending on where the location is, sometimes it does hit 3% if there's a lot of, certainly, a lot of road construction traffic or whatnot. I don't personally see that as an issue, just knowing what, getting a little general idea of the zoning in, in the town. I don't personally see that as an issue, um, just knowing what, getting a little general idea of the zoning in, in the town and where we possibly would be able to locate. Um, I don't see that as being an issue. Um, but the second thing that I was gonna, that I'm offering today is that, um, myself as one of the owners, I do want to pledge that we will pay the three percent charge for the five-year periods, a five-year window. Um, that is a group that I want to pay that three percent during the five-year period. Um, it's, it's, the town discretion, what you want to use for, at least use it for. Um, again, as a father who had four kids who were from Silver Lake, one with special needs, who has obviously received extreme, um, attention over the years and is certainly getting the best care and attention right now as provided by Silver Lake and the town. Um, I personally would, would, would like to try to, to help to suggest where maybe the funds go. I know that the school budgets are having issues right now. That money can go anywhere. It doesn't need to be designated for any specific thing to go in the town. Um, I, I would love to see some go towards the school district. I would love to see things happen in the town, maybe special projects, um, that are budgeted for, can't be done, whether it's a, something with the ball field, a park, anything. I, I'm really open to it. And, and, and again, that's really the only reason I'm here. Uh, I, I'd be lying to you if I said that getting involved in the cannabis industry has not been a benefit to myself personally and wasn't going to benefit my heart and wasn't going to come for me. I think that's the purpose of going into business in general. I think we all, you know, start companies and go into business to make money for ourselves and for our family. Um, and, and I'm certainly in a position and have an opportunity that I never thought that I would have had a year ago. Um, I've kind of run into the right people at the right time and had the right attitude going into this, and that's kind of why I am where I am. So that's why I'm here. Because as I move forward, as I look at the numbers, I want to at least give Halifax the opportunity to tell me yes or no, if you think that this would be appropriate in the community. If the answer's no, from the board or from the general, uh, from the town, because I know we need to have it up and forward in public forum and that, that residents would need to come and obviously express their concerns or questions and whatnot. If the answer's no, I completely understand. It, it's, it's, it can be a controversial, um, subject in a lot of towns and it can be sensitive. Um, I'm coming, I'm coming here to off, to offer it as an opportunity. Um, so if we get to that point, I would love to speak to you folks further about it. I would love to be able to present to you at some point in the future and love to see if it would be an opportunity for this community to benefit off of the, not only the tax money, but also the, the additional funds that we would want to give to the town.
The town has expressed support in the past for marijuana. Um, I, I, I think when you're ready, obviously you should come back and, uh, probably talk to Charlie Selig just for the procedural end of it.
Yeah.
Um, town meeting may, uh, take up some issues concerning, uh, placement because a lot of it's going to have to do with where, uh, you're looking to locate.
Correct.
To your point, I think it's premature, but I, I personally appreciate you coming in and giving us an overview. Uh, I don't know if anyone else has any specific questions. I think they're kind of tough right now, but.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And again, I think I was, I've been communicating with, with Charlie for a little while and I appreciate him being back to me and going back and forth. And, and, um, I think a lot of it comes down to, is going to come down to location for us. Um, you know, like I said, there's a, there's a lot of areas that, that we are looking at to move to. Um, there's other areas that may have a, a larger population base, but I, I've made the decision for our group that I want to pursue Halifax first. So, so when I say you, you might be diligent at this point, it's basically based on real estate and planning and what will work. And, and I think that if, if we could find a place in the area that would fit into the zoning, in, into your zoning, then I would definitely have a plan in front of you folks within the next thirty, forty, five days for sure.
And that brings us to after-town meeting, which is a good time to do it. Anybody?
I have no questions at this time. And when we make the presentation of the way it might be located and what type of traffic will affect the things, but that's to be seen when we talk to you again.
Exactly. And, and what, and what I will, and what I will have for you at that time is, is really a, a population analysis, um, and a traffic analysis on, on foot traffic and then what that will look like as far as, you know, uh, you'd obviously be able to track it and what the location would be. Um, so we do a pretty extensive look, um, at all that, at all the factors that go into it. And that's what we'll be able to present to you, um, in the future. But, but again, I'm, I'm basically doing this at this point just as a courtesy to.
Let us see what's coming.
So, um, so I do appreciate the time.
I was wondering if it has any that are open now that you could tell us about experiencing what has happened in the area based on the new business?
As far as like just the, the, the area around the, the facility?
Open facilities you're currently running? Is that, is that what you mean?
Yeah, like any, any effects that may or may not have happened?
So we don't, we don't currently operate them. We've been, um, we deal with about fifteen dispensaries throughout the state. We've put in the safe and security systems into, um, what you'll find is that, uh, these places are going to be more security banks. Um, the regulations that they put, the, the regulation that the state and Cannabis Control Commission have put in place for, uh, dispensaries is, um, unbelievable. We read it through our paper. I mean, we're talking, you know, seventy, seventy to a hundred cameras. We're talking door access controls. We're talking, you know, security, you know, security inside, outside the building, traffic control, the whole thing. Um, one of the, one of the pieces that we'll actually, we'll present in packages that we have, um, part of our group is that we have a former police chief, retired police chief for thirty-five years on our team. So he puts together, um, a, a kind of a crime study of the area to just show any areas that, that these dispensaries have opened up. Um, kind of just a proof of concept to say like, here's what the crime rates were before. Here's when the marijuana shop moved in and here's what's gone on after the fact. It's typically, it's typically zero. Um, and because of all the security, really, it's, it's almost a detractor, um, when these, these places go up. The, if you ever go, if you're ever in the Copman Place area, um, Plymouth has one that's set back. It's off of, uh, Aldrin Road. It's up, that, it's back in that industrial park.
Yeah.
But when you pull in there, um, they have security as you're going in. They have security in the parking lot. They, you know, they have security in the building. Um, it, it's honestly, it, it's really overkill. But if, if that's what, you know, the, the commission has felt was appropriate and that's what the town feels appropriate, then, then, you know, that's what we need and so. Thanks.
Is the facility in Plymouth one that you guys set up?
Uh, we, we sold them safe. So we didn't do any, any setup there. They, they purchased, uh, they purchased equipment from us, but we haven't had any, any, uh, like long-term.
Okay.
But, but, but yeah, I mean, they're, they're, they're a busy facility and they're doing really well. I mean, the place just opened up in Rockland, I think, two to three weeks ago. Uh, so I mean, they started to pop up everywhere.
To your point, I think location is going to be the issue.
Correct, absolutely. I think a hundred percent, yeah.
And certainly we'd be happy to, you know, have you come in and present when you're more, not more prepared, but ready.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you folks, have a good night. We'll see you soon.
Our next appointment is at seven forty-five.
Official hearing.
It's an official hearing, so we have to start at seven forty-five. So I, I would suggest we have another recess until seven forty-five.
Make that motion?
Do I have time to go home, have Derek?
Yes, I haven't had it yet either, so I'm, I'm with you.
How fast can those things crack?
All those in favor?
Alright.
Thank you. It's now seven forty-five and we have another scheduled appointment. Um, we're going to have a truck exclusion hearing, uh, concerning circuit and Laurel Street.
So the situation was, is that we had trucks erroneously going down Circuit and Laurel trying to get to Maryland's Landing, which is a site that their fields being bought, long-term plans are for a solar field at the site. Um, basically the GPS, whatever auto maps they're using was erroneously guiding those trucks towards Maryland's Landing in essence from that way, which would be going down Laurel Street to the end of it. There's no access to the site. Um, the board's been in touch with Maryland's Landing. Thing about it, and I don't know if there are any recent problems in the last couple of weeks, but one of the ideas going forth was to, by having a truck exclusion zone for those two streets, we could put signage upstate in that. The normal language for the exclusion is, you know, a certain size, but for exclusions for that, in essence of other vehicles, for instance, making deliveries as an example, are allowed on those streets. So the, the normal exclusion is the exclusion will now apply to heavy commercial vehicles going toward coming from places of blind set streets for the purpose of making deliveries of goods, materials or merchandise to or similar collections from a body of land or buildings or adjacent streets or ways which access cannot be otherwise regained or to vehicles used in connection with construction maintenance and repair of such streets or public utilities there in, with two federal stages for a public service corporation owned vehicles. And what I'm suggesting, that given the comments that the board have received from residents there, to add the phrase, "or to vehicles owned by residents of these streets", that eliminates concern by some residents that their vehicles might not fall because they would be over-stored in the town. The actual student deals with carrying capacity, not the weight of vehicles, but the other idea we've been developing is the archer carry capacity. This eliminates that power by simply saying that it's only a resident bringing it to their house, not power. It's excluded from the exclusion class.
Steve, help me with that, some of that, you've put off. Uh, I, I just do have to come up with some language, it's simple.
No, this would be, this would be the language. I mean, your residents should know. If they have a question of when the signs go up, that whether they're going to allow? The answer is yes, your vehicle is allowed to.
Oh, okay, so I guess you should say, "I'm on the table, I'm going to have to talk to more than I know." Um, you have a resident? Is that one of your concerns or?
I don't know. I think we would just look for the trucks to stop.
Okay.
But not have all these signs on the highway, but that's what has to be done. I don't. I don't want, you know.
Yeah, I know, you have to come up with a.
Do you have the trucks stopped since we?
The dead end sign. Have they stopped since the dead end?
I haven't seen anybody. My neighbor said we saw one or two, but there's no rhyme or reason. Sometimes you have seen them for a while.
Yeah.
And then for like half a week, these freight trains are eighteen wheels come down. I don't know if they're coming from like a new project or the night.
I, I was going to say that's probably what's going on. Yeah, somebody does not.
The GPS is taking that.
Yeah.
So new companies coming down, all of a sudden they figure out that's not the right way and this is the other one.
Yeah.
Well, how about no access to?
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was.
I, myself, I'm going to get in trouble again, but I am not following the signs at all. I mean, I would fall apart and I'd always spend money on those signs. That, if they look at the GPS, they won't notice the signs, it's only that it's Laurel Street.
So what you're saying is they'll have to turn around when they get up there anyway?
I mean, I live on Pearl Street and there's no truck, there's a truck with a sign. My camera has the blue trucks coming down there, so it's, they don't pay attention to the signs. They don't not look at them. And the more signs you put up, it's, it's pollution. It's called sign pollution. You can put as many signs as you want.
And they're not listening on the air?
They're looking at the signs, there's so many signs, you don't look at them. So myself, I'm against that. I understand the problem, but I don't think it's, it's not a solved problem. It's just going to spend the town's money on signs that are just going to be more public signs about that.
I kind of agree with that too, you know, more and more signs, it's, because they might say their GPS is a law too from that because this is the way.
It's taking me anywhere, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I don't know if there's an easy answer to this, but.
So the thought process was if the GPS is misdirecting them and the solar farm is there, we can continue, so they try to get hold of, what was the name of the solar farm that's not there?
Um, they're, they're not there, but it's, it's.
McDonald's?
McDonald's, yeah, are doing the landfill operation.
They made another mom called the landfill, bringing it over.
Yeah, for, for the Bridgewater side. And, and, and in the long-term plan, they want to connect the two, but that, that's something that now we're, we weren't particularly excited about that.
They don't have access from Bridgewater?
The, the access route that they're coming in on is, uh.
It's one oh six, that's rise of town.
Yeah, that right-hand turn at the.
I'm sorry, everybody's talking about, what was it?
If you go down one oh six, you're heading towards Halifax. And you get by Nick and Angelo's and the auto body or looks next to there. Just after that is a right-hand turn into the old landfill site.
Between, between families.
Yeah, between families.
Okay.
Which is a great truck for almost it is. With it done, it's very, very odd.
Could we get that company to change the GPS to that spot?
You know, I'm not sure how that works. I think there's several different.
Yes, this is a problem. If you put, you Google Maps, for instance, will indicate a certain thing. You, we, as much as you can ask Google Maps to make changes there, they don't have to listen to you. And so if a firm is using a map company or GPS or whatever, and GPS is data from satellites, it tells you where you are and where you want to be. Sometimes the maps that are used GPS will think you can get to somewhere. I mean, you read about in newspaper articles, someone ends up in the bottom, someone ends up in the river because GPS insists that you should be able to go across the river at location. They don't pay attention.
I think everybody's had that experience with the map at some point.
Right, right, don't do it. It also leads to you all the way to the.
Yes, right. And that was shut back before you could get the gas pipeline.
So, so what I would mean by it with the company itself would change the GPS location because you can go on and change your specific address. Maybe if we politely talk to the people who live in Bridgewater and said, can you go on to the different sites and change your GPS in that?
And the board's been in contact with Maryland's Landing and they've done as well as they can to make those changes. That's why, I mean, Chris was running into problems, what, a month and a half ago? Let's say, something like that, Chris?
Yeah, it was a little serious.
Yeah.
Trucks.
And because of what Maryland's Landing's been doing there, we're both trying to get the GPS changed and also contacting the truck companies that they've been using and trying to reduce the inter容 of the trucks coming through Laurel and Circuit.
What's up with the signs right now?
Uh, we put a dead end sign right at the corner of Laurel and Circuit where they take a turn. Because what it is, they come up the hill at Circuit and then taking around Laurel Street. You get down the end, it's a fence, and they have that all the way up, that was the first.
So that's what, so that's what they crush on the road then?
Yeah, right at that, the turn.
Would it make sense to put it further up towards?
Well, we, we had it down there, so. You said they're not coming down those.
Yeah, I think an hour after you moved it, some triaxes came and they went to turn. They must have saw it, because all of a sudden they saw it and went in the section and.
It did the.
Turned it down. They parked behind the buildings for about fifteen minutes, they must have done a phone.
Yes. Because since the signs, I think it's helping.
I, I'm not intending to think you're right. I think the dead end signs are about as good as you're going to do. The more verbiage you put on them, the less they're going to see them anyway.
Right.
And that's, that's, as, as long as we. That's terrible, they can read that.
Well, they can read the GPS though.
Yeah. No, those, those are little figures. And, and, and the problem there is, we looked at it earlier, is there's probably multiple carriers and then they're adding different carriers all the time.
Well, that's like you were saying, and if you want everything for a while and all of a sudden the company's going there, they're being sent that way. So somebody goes that way, they're not going to know until they get there.
Yeah, some of the names in the trucks, they don't think they're from all over Eastern Mass, even North Shore and all over.
I was behind one today, it's definitely in North Shore.
That was one of the problems some of us had when they were talking about expanding from the Halifax and where these different, uh, substances were coming from.
Re, reclaim materials?
Yeah, yeah. I didn't want to get too far into that, but yeah, it was a little concerning for sure. Um, I, I, I think if, we, we can have a policy for sure, but I don't know that the signage is going to work out.
Well, the sign, you need the signage to go. Basically, just go to it. I mean, you're, you're just working to.
There's one, one thing, if we do this here, as everyone was saying with the four-way stop, we put a four-way stop on one spot, now all the other four-way intersections are going to want that four-way stop. I mean, I understand what people say that they need it because people are cutting through, but that's not the town's problem, that it is a problem, but the town's not paying if somebody doesn't know how to drive.
Right.
And they're not, if they're going through there, they're not going to pay attention to a sign anywhere. So if we do this up there, you're going to have all these other streets that are in the same situation that some of it. that are in the same situation, that some big trucks go down this and that, and I don't want the truck this, and I don't want those people having the trucks also, truck signs. So, that's why I'm against it.
I think the best thing we could probably do is work with...
Work with Maryland's Landing.
And, and be emphatic about it, that they need to contact any new carriers, and make sure that they understand how they get there and display the GPS. Uh, I, I guess we're just gonna get seen go, kinda thing. I mean, I make everybody extremely happy, but I think it's the most reasonable thing at this point.
But, to be, want a motion?
Uh, to leave alone?
You're, you don't need, if you're not doing anything, you don't need to do it.
We're just leaving a loop, I guess, for now, and then get some feedback, and...
Yeah, I think at least now they're aware of it, and like you said, if they didn't contact with them, they're aware of it, so maybe that'll cut it down.
It sounds like that's the best we can do for a, or, or the foreseeable future.
I mean, I think it's worse, I mean, and we can figure out something else, maybe, but...
Yeah.
Someone motion to close the public area?
Yes.
So move?
Sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
And at this point, I guess we'll, uh, entertain a motion, for sure, and if you have more, other business.
A little move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, everybody.